All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 27, 2023 Special Planning Board Meeting. If you could all raise for the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so introduction to board members. To my far away left, we have new Rick Rains. He's on the planning board. And then we have Tom Wright, Noah Cobb, Issa Chase, and Mike Latterer, all on the Selectment Board. Select person board?
Select board.
Select board, there we go. Okay. Then myself, Michael LaRue. To my right, Jerry Graybill, Pauli Matucci, Don Ganarelli. And then on Zoom, we have Les Fodwell. We have Irish Griffin, our code enforcement officer, and James Bellissimo, our town manager. I'll open up the first public comment. Okay, I'll close the first public comment and move on to the workshop. And James has prepared us something to go over.
Sure, just do a quick overview. See if I can get this working. Of what we're reviewing today. It's actually four different documents. The first two are pretty straightforward, so we'll start there. First Amendment, it's a little blurry there, but what it is, is increasing the base major subdivision fee from $200 to $750. You look at like our site plan review, it's $1,000. We haven't updated our subdivision fees in probably 15 years. It increases the review escrow fee that we take in a little bit. And what that is, is that money we take in in escrow that gets charged when SMPDC or a third-party engineer reviews that. So it just kind of modernizes us to kind of today's cost, and it's consistent with neighboring communities. So that will be its own separate board article. And that's it for subdivision regulation amendments. Number two, we had Mr. Hurd here. He's interested in purchasing the Knights of Hytheus Building. He's been a member there. And it's property just outside the Village Overlay District. It's a request to be added to the district. If you look at the map up there, it's highlighted in yellow. It's able to be added. And essentially, what he's looking to do, and he's not allowed to do, is to have a couple apartments there. So by being able to be in the Village Overlay District, he'd be able to do a couple apartments there.
What can he do now?
One residence, essentially. It's a little bit of a smaller lot. Right now, it's just a kind of like a, it's the KP Hall, so it's like a vacant.
So it's just pretty much never been used.
Yeah, it's pretty much just sitting there right now, so.
Okay, and he's going to turn into what, two, three, four apartments?
I think it'd be at least two apartments. And then number three, go over some of land use ordinance amendments from the last planning board meeting. Met with Pat Bover to go over some of her concerns, also Jeremy Caston. Added in a standalone definition for gas station, and added that to the use table. The zones it's allowed in were updated. Right now, as proposed, would be allowed in R1 and RCI zone. There are some comments that Jerry's concerns brought forward, some of Jerry's concerns into these standards. I think Jerry has a few other discussion points before I want to hit on once we get into the workshop. So things that were added in, the fence requirement and the setback. Some of the things that are also changed and probably will be a discussion point are the operating hours. Another part added was the adding a tank alarm system is required for all underground tanks. Go through the other amendments. The mixed-use amendment would allow for, if someone has a residence and wants to add a business in the village commercial zone, shoreline commercial industrial zone, or rural commercial industrial zone, this would allow them to do that without needing an extra half of the minimum lot size. So if they had two acres, they wouldn't need three acres total to put a business there. They'd be able to do so with the two acres. This is, you know, would encourage some economic development in those commercial zones. The third change are accessory drilling unit changes. The intention for the changes to the land use table are to be compliant with the new LV 2003 law that's coming. And that's the same for the F there, the accessory drilling unit, do not count as a permit issued toward the growth limit. That's actually made in law now. One of the discussion points we had was the minimum size for an accessory apartment. One of the discussions we had was if the state's allowing 190 as the minimum, why would we restrict it any further? So that's up for consideration might be a discussion point. This, as it stands, as proposed, would allow for tiny homes as accessory drilling units. The marijuana amendments, going back to when we first put in marijuana amendments, we had concerns about marijuana cooperatives, about apartment buildings, and people combining their licenses and the type of scale of operation we would have. I mean, from day one, we had questions about spouses and being able to combine licenses. As it stands now, that would be prohibited, prohibited. So this amendment would allow up to two people co-locating to have a home marijuana-based Going back to some of our joint meetings, this as proposed would eliminate the cap. We are starting to see the marijuana industries slow down a bit, so this would just allow to see other developments come in. This one, number six, I think, this is pretty good. Solar farms, this was done by a previous planner, and it just kind of got put on the shelf. One thing that was added was requiring a capacity letter from Central Maine Power. It also puts in a cap for solar farms, and I believe it has the same language to revisit it, but it should be, yeah, place the cap at an approved number. So we have four approved of fifth on the way. And then Hannah brought forward lighting performance standards, so this would be performance standards that apply time-wide. There's some really great language in there. It's something that we've really needed to spruce up and haven't been able to find the right language, and Hannah brought this forward. I thought it was excellent. And I'll just go right down to the design, the design guides. So the design guidelines were initially adopted by the planning board in 2018. They're adopted by the planning board essentially as a policy and a supplement to Section 6.4 in the Land Use Ordinance. The goal of bringing this forward today and now is to, A, make these more of, from a guide to more of standards. So what that means is a guide is more of, hey, we want you to do this. Standards are more, you have to do this. And there are provisions in this that it is up to the planning board. You are able to, you are able to decide what is applicable. So not all of these standards apply to every single application, so you do have some flexibility. There are some changes from the 2018 version to this version, and primarily, all of that language comes from other neighboring communities. So it comes from Kittery, Maine, Hamilton, Massachusetts, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and Meredith, New Hampshire. So a lot of times, just trying to figure out what works for Berwick and copy and paste it and change the town name to Corwin. And again, guides to standards, some updates, and having it applied to our corridors of Route 4, 236, and 9. And instead of having, the planning board can adopt it as a policy, but to have more teeth, it has more teeth if it's adopted by the town. And this just goes over the purpose to protect, enhance, and perpetuate the town's historic, cultural, and architectural heritage. Part B, the planning board can require some renderings, so to show that the applications are meeting those design criteria. And this applicability, this gives a little bit more oomph to the performance standards, which do have some design elements to it, but it gives you more detail. And the whole point is when an applicant comes in, they know well ahead of time what the planning board is looking for. And at the initial onset, applications are very malleable. So if you get that first cut at it, the further along we are on the same page, the better outcomes will have. So this design guidelines covers height, space of buildings, entrances, setbacks, colors, materials, roof shapes, scale, elevations, commercial structures, large-scale structures, service areas, and drive-throughs, and parking lots. And it has some pretty pictures of what we want and what we don't want. So that's the overview of why we're here today, and I'll take it back to Mike for the workshop.
Okay. So do you have any questions or comments to add to this?
A hundred, but, you know. The, a lot of it's very straightforward, and, I mean, a lot of it's very positive. A couple just questions for clarification. The operating hours for automotive convenience store and gas station. Cumberland Farms is open 24 hours a day, right?
Not currently.
No.
But that's a staffing change now, I presume.
That's a staffing.
Okay. If we adopt these, this provision of land use ordinance, would that become effective for them as well?
No, they would be grandfathered in.
They'd be grandfathered in.
Because they're already here before we adjusted the land use ordinance.
Okay.
Well, let's see, mine, though, is I want to, you know, talk about the gas station convenience store operating 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. As somebody that commuted to Boston, Mass. many, many years, is, I was stopping for gas at 4:30 in the morning, and I would not have wanted to have to drive to another town. The 6:00 AM stop is, that's not acceptable to me.
Even the second downtown, I think, just for being good neighbors to those that are commuting to the base. You know, there's a 5:00 AM gate entry. So I know myself going in to Kittery at 5:00 in the morning. Sometimes I'm watching people already trying to fill out the first gas station that's open. I think that could be.
Does the operating hours, I mean, we live in a modern age where people can just go up to gas pumps and put in cars. Would that include that ability? Like, if the store itself is closed, but people can still ride up and get gas, would that be considered operating hours?
You can split the two.
Can I interject on that a little bit?
Absolutely.
I did quite a bit of research on this gas station issue, and I met with Mike at Cumberland Farms. And he said that at Cumberland Farms, they are not allowed to pump gas if there's no attendant there. Now, I don't know. I asked him, I said, well, how is it that other gas stations are allowed to? Like, is the Mape Station in North Berwick that is, there's nobody ever there, like, 24/7? He didn't really have an answer to me to that. He didn't understand how they were able to pump gas without an attendant, so I don't know if that's a Cumberland Farms issue.
I got the answer to that. Maine has a ordinance, a statute. If you're going to have the pumps open, there is two pages of guidelines. I'm trying to find them. I have them here in this mess.
I have them as well.
But that has to be met.
Yeah, they have additional, I've been studying my fuel, when I leave this job, I'm going to be a fuel person because the money's there. They have a whole bunch of other different requirements that they have to meet, certain alarm system setups. There we go. Well, we'll let Jerry take it from here, but it's basically Cumberland Farms doesn't have all of the fail safes in place that are required for that.
You have to have, like I said.
They've shown two pages of requirements.
Yeah, it's very heavy. It's, fuel stations are heavily regulated to begin with, and that, when they're not attended, is extra.
Right. The town has to be involved. There has to be, you know.
The town, the state, the testing's more frequent, their registration's more. Oh, you're cutting out Les.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
I was, shipyard, coming down 236, right? And I assumed that people would be coming before 6:00 AM. So I wondered about that as well, about the 24-hour day, at least the ability to pump gas. And while we're talking about that, I guess, since it seems like the state has that regulated, my opinion on that would be that we just say, you know, as long as your state approves, right? But I want to talk about A a little bit, the size of gas stations, the size of the store. I had to go look at some gas stations to get a perspective of what 3,000 square feet looked like, or 5,000 square feet, because that was the numbers, the two numbers that we were looking at. Cumberland Farms in Berwick is 2,400 square feet. On Cumberland Farms' website, they say their stores range typically from 2,400 to 4,000 square feet. I went to the Cumberland Farms in Summersworth on 108, kind of diagonally across from Key Auto Group, and I measured that store, and, you know, I kind of, you know, there's some bump outs I didn't measure and stuff, but I estimate that store's about 4,700 square. Just to give people a visual perspective of what those two stores, the sizes of those two stores and the scale. And because my thought was that, I understand in, you know, School Street, right, the R1 District, the Village District, or R1 District, you know, we wouldn't want a monster 5,000 square foot gas station on School Street. I totally see that. But I'm thinking on 236, would it be horrible? I mean, you know, you have Kind Farms, those are big buildings. You have McConstruction, you know, you have, you have a lot of businesses there that would match the scale of a 4,000 or 5,000 square foot store if somebody chose to go that route. And I just, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, but I just thought it was worth considering that maybe in RCI, it's one number, and in R1, it's a different number.
Where did the 3,000 square feet come from?
That came from me, because I don't want a monster of a gas station right there. And if you look at the guidelines, the way it's put out, for a convenience store-type situation, they recommend 1,500 to 2,500 square feet. So that's what this is supposed to be. Why would we want something bigger than that? It's just going to turn into a nightmare.
Yeah, I agree, but, and I think for the sake of this guideline, maybe we ought to do 2,500 square feet. Larger sizes will be entertained as exception items by the planning board.
Conditional. Like, 3,000 or 2,500 is like the standard, and then up to 5,000 on a conditional basis.
Correct, depending on the location and that sort of thing.
James, is that legal?
I can bring it forward, see how it goes.
Well, I mean, even if we did it as like the R1 zone has a smaller overlay, like the smaller number, and then the RCI zone could have the bigger number. I mean, that seems, if Route 4 and stuff like that, like Les said, I mean, they have a lot of matched buildings that are pretty big.
Yeah, I see the Kind Farms is 2,000.
Per building.
Per building. Yep, per building.
And they have 30, up to 30 cars in there at a time sometimes, so you got a gas station next door with that many, you know, the availability for that much more. Look at all the traffic congestion right there next to each other.
I can bring that forward to her attorney and see how we can massage it and get it ready for next week.
Yeah, I think, to me, and I said this in the beginning, and I think someone just echoed it, is that, you know, the simplest way that makes sense to me is to put one limit in R1 and a different limit in RCI, and that's, we do that in all zones for many things already. Yeah, so I mean, I guess that was just really all my thing. I think, I don't know if it's made it in here. I made notes, but I may have missed it. One of the other things, maybe it was just an email, the notes was talked about having to do a DVP or a DOT traffic study. And I don't, I don't think that that is something that we should have in our land use ordinance, because it may not be on, so I may be talking.
Well, any of these stories we're talking about, you know, whether Route 4, 236, or Route 9 would be, you know, the state would have to be involved in any traffic study anywhere.
That was my point, Tom, is that, you know, you got to get a DOT entrance permit anyway. So, you know, us regulating them to telling them that they got to get a DOT traffic study, you know, DOT's already has that regulated.
And they will be, they're required for a traffic movement permit, which is the highest level of review with DOT, and they're going to have to implement the traffic study concept. So that was all integrated, so they're going to, that's part of what they're going to be required to do for their turn lane.
By the DOT, right?
By the DOT, yep.
I was just thinking that, you know, one of, one of the things that, you know, having been to the planning board numerous times and sitting on the planning board for one night, an extremely long night, anytime we can eliminate duplicity, I think is a benefit. You know, it makes our job easier and cleaner. If DOT already has, you know, a set of regulations for the entrance permit, we, you know, we don't need to reinvent that wheel, I don't think.
I also had a question about the, pumps are not, are to be located no closer than 250 feet to any residence. I don't know if that feels too short or too long, but it does, I mean, it feels like a pretty big space.
So we've been kind of going back and forth on this. I've been on the saying that it's too far. And several people at Publica say it's not far enough. So this has kind of been like the happy medium between it.
The unhappy medium.
Right, right. I agree, because if it's in an R1 zone, that's, you're already cramped for space as it is.
Could you, could you fit a football field anywhere in, in, in R1 without hitting a resident? I don't, I don't know.
No, and I mean Cumberland Farms, there's people.
Yeah, they have, they have people behind, and on the side, and on the other side, and in front. You could probably hit six properties within 200.
I mean, which Cumberland Farms are you talking about?
The one I hear.
The one downtown?
That's on City Water and Sewer.
Yeah, no, but I just mean like.
You're talking about residents wells, one downtown, don't have wells.
Well, that's not, that's not what's in the land use ordinance. It just says pumps are to be located no closer than 250 feet to any residence. It doesn't say.
It doesn't say.
A well or.
I was going to say, this wasn't copied down, right? Because it says from a residential well.
Okay.
And the guidelines that I found said 500 feet minimum.
Okay.
And then I found another place that said 250 feet, so it's inconsistent.
If, if the language is pumps are not to be located no closer than 250 feet to a residential well, 100% in favor of that. That's 100% true.
So, okay, like I said, I've got four chapters that were emailed to me from DEP. So the thing is, one of the chapters that they sent me, because of my contacts that I've been dealing with, they're aware that this is all about fuel stations, and I asked them about information they might have in regards to drinking water wells, private wells. So they sent me Chapter 700, which is wellhead protection, citing in facilities that pose a significant threat to drinking water. Now, there's two things here that I want to read to you. The first is wellhead protection zone, means in the case of a private drinking water well, the area within 300 feet of the well. However, this chapter also defines what they consider to be, you know, the list of things that they give for definitions for hazards. There's actually, in regards to automobiles, the recycling businesses, graveyards, maintenance and repair, and body shops. They don't actually list fuel stations in the wellhead protection thing at all. But I think if you're going to go with a distance from a well and you're going to specify it as a well, I would go at the 300 feet, not to be contrary to the 250, but 300 feet from a fuel pumping.
And I would also want to specify fuel pumps, because it just says pumps.
Yes.
So if, if the language is fuel pumps are not to be located no closer than 300 feet to any residential well, thumbs up on that.
Yep. Fuel pumps within 300.
Let's amend that.
Within 300 feet of a private drinking water well.
Yep.
So coming back.
Because public drinking water wells, if we're going to, if you want to include everything, the case of a public drinking water well, it has to be within 1,000 feet. It can't be within 1,000 feet, rather, not has to be, can't be within 1,000 feet of a public drinking water well. So if it's an individual house, 300 feet. If it's a public well, 1,000 feet. And I know that South Berwick does have an aquifer across Route 4 from there, so we might want to add that verbiage as well.
That sounds great.
Because my well, Paul's well, and all the other wells right around, they're all monitored by the South Berwick Water Company.
Yep. So we want to.
So that's where they're getting their water. And this is right there where this gas station would be going.
But where they're.
They can't talk specifically about any announcements.
But where they're, where they're.
I'm just saying.
Where we're talking about, you know, putting this in as an ordinance, I think it's appropriate to include verbiage for both the private and the public wells, if you don't mind.
Coming back to the hours of operation, did we make a determination on that? So would it be allowed to have 24 hours if they followed the main procedure for that? It's just that the business itself wouldn't be open, like, if there was a convenience store part of it, that wouldn't be open? I kind of agree with Tom about the having it a little early. If we could do it like four, I feel like that would cater towards the people that do go to the shipyard early.
So to clarify, we're considering keeping the operating hours between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM, where there's like an actual store open, there's people, there's employees on site. And if they meet the main standards, then they can dispense fuel 24 hours a day without needing an agent on site.
But that just only opens it up to ATM, like debit cards.
Exactly. The debit cards, credit cards.
Anyone who pays cash, they still have to go.
They'll have to go somewhere else.
I say we give them the availability to do four. Doesn't mean that they're going to do it, you know, but having it, because like you said, Cumberland Farms has the ability to do it 24 hours. I know they're downtown, and it kind of, like, it kind of fits in that spot, but like in an R1 zone, if it's close to that, like, how could they do it, but no one else can?
And don't forget, everything here is conditional permit, as Ray. So that's something when they come before the board, the board can say, hey, you have residents right here, and we're going to, this one can be restricted to a 6:00 AM, or 5:00 AM, or 4:00 AM. Right? You can look at it that way, so.
Can I make you guys fuel experts, too? So, a couple of things. In regards to item G, the all-in-ground tanks must include tank alarm, be designed double wall safer as defined by Maine DEP. And speaking to the facilities that operate unattended, like Les was talking about North Berwick. So this one is Chapter, not that anybody cares, but Chapter 691, which is the basic rules for underground storage. So they do have a requirement already for leak detection, that all new and replacement facilities must be designed to provide secondary containment for all facility components routinely containing product, including tanks, piping, and other below ground ancillary equipment and product dispensers. New and replacement tanks and product piping must have continuous interstitial space monitoring. So they have to, basically, I'll give you the easier version. Any new tanks that are installed are already required by the state to have, they have to be double walled. They have to have a space in between with a sensor that has a minimal capacity of 50 gallons for each tank fill that they can provide, and monitors for that. And as far as overnight unattended fuel systems, if a facility operates unattended at any time, then the dispenser sump sensors must shut down all submersible pumps, which is what I believe Cumberland Farms is missing to answer your question, Les. So basically, they already have G covered, and they actually have stricter standards than what we have in here, so just a little reassurance.
Perfect.
But we, you know, I don't know if you guys wanted to add any additional verbiage to the ordinance in regards to that, but that's, that's the, that's the short version. There's a whole lot.
No, and that was actually going to be my question to go back to Les. No, and that was actually gonna be my question to go back to Les, is, is G even something that we need to have in there just to, for redundancy of the D E P, if we're just gonna, if we're filing what their guidance is? Obviously, they, they could put something even in safer, and, you know, we're not even there.
The reason I brought that up, and I guess they put it in here, is I deal with this a lot in what I do.
Yep.
And if the alarm goes off, somebody has to respond to that alarm within X amount of minutes. Where that would be located, who's gonna respond in that amount of time and all that? So this is kind of what goes along with this, especially if it's not gonna be manned after hours.
No, it is, it is in there that they have to have those double wall systems.
Oh, yeah.
And actually, reading it even further, there are certain, and, and pardon me if I kinda butcher the way this is said, because one can only rely on Dr. Google for so many things before, before you have to just sign up for MIT, and I wasn't doing that this week. For those particular facilities that do pump without attendance there, when they're unmanned, they not only require it on the tanks for that pump switch shuts down when that alarm goes off for an unmanned if there is a leak. And the, the measurements for the, some of the other qualifications are as little as an eighth of a, of an inch. But they also have certain sump equipment that are certain, basically, containment systems that go around, like any joints in the piping from the tanks to the pumps, that if they're going to be unmanned, they have to have these, and they have to contain so much, you know, it's all calculated based on how many gallons per pump they're gonna be operating. But every, if it's gonna be unmanned, then even the actual joints in the event something should leak has a sensor and a containment to collect it. So that's something that might make the board feel a little bit better about some of these regs that were, because we're dabbling in things that, let's be real, most of us don't play with. So if I can provide you guys any, any information that provides you a little more comfort with making your rules.
I mean, would it just be easier to say that we, that instead of G, you just cross down, say you have to file all main D E P guidelines on?
That is at the board's discretion, my friend.
I mean, if that's stricter at that point, and has more weight, I mean, then we might as well just make main D E P.
Or how about leave G in and say, four main guidelines if.
Let me check one thing before I give my opinion on that. I wanna reread something while you guys continue discussion, if you don't mind, before I.
You know, one of the other things that was brought up at our last planning board meeting by Pat Bover, was that she was pretty adamant that the proximity of Route 236 downtown, or towards the downtown, to the Salmon Falls River was a dangerous location for, for a gas station of any sort, and I just wanted to echo that to the board tonight, because Pat, Pat made that, and I thought it was something that we should keep in mind. We only have in Berwick one source of water, and that's the Salmon Falls River. And I think we have to be exceptionally careful with any, any facility that has contaminants on 236 that could possibly infiltrate into the Salmon Falls River. So I just wanna throw that out so that we are all aware of that. And I think maybe there should be a footnote in this that says something to the effect that on 236, in, in the close end downtown area, there will be extra scrutiny of these facilities because of their proximity to our water supply.
Well, to be fair, the only place on 236 that is currently available is down in between, basically, you know, post office, the dump, the sewer district. Those things are already out there.
Right.
Can't think of anything more contaminated, sewer district that, that pumps right back into that river there, so.
No, no, they're very clean.
They do a nice job.
Oh, they are. Hey, this, this stands the height, this stands the height of the river water.
That's true. And, and the dump is right there, transfer station.
Transfer station.
Transfer station.
I get yelled at for that.
Also, Gateway Gas is right next to it.
Yeah, exactly, they're right next to the first one.
No, the same, same falls all under the watershed protection anyway.
It is.
But, yeah, I think, you know, anything, you know, because it's, you know, not just Salmon Falls, it's Worcester Brook, Long Brook, that on,
Yeah.
on Route 4, all of those, you know, is, we have to be cognizant of all of that.
And the, and the state is especially restrictive of the river as well, so.
The other guideline I found, just to mention it here, is if, say the location is in an area where we know there's residential wells or wells that are used for town water, it said that, you know, lined retention ponds should be there just in case there would be a rupture of the truck. That would be putting, you know, gas into the tanks, or hose would come out. And they also stated that because of that potential, that monitoring wells should be there and checked.
Does the state have any rules on that, Irish?
It came from some of the state guidelines.
There, the monitoring well requirements are. Oh, let me see. That's not that one.
My suspicion would be that the state would also have some pretty specific corner.
Yeah, I will, I will look for that. Les is right.
I have a great idea if it's not part of the state guideline.
I'd like to, you know, just ask a couple more questions as well, I wasn't involved, as you guys were obviously involved. It says, you know, that the automotive convenience stores shall not be affiliated with automotive repair facilities. And where does that come from?
That was something that Lee J developed it, but I think, I guess, I guess it's just to have the gas, as it's just, it's separating the two from making them two distinct uses.
I was just wondering where it came from, you know, it seemed kind of different to me, but, you know, I'm assuming, you know, an automotive convenience store, we're talking about Cumberland Farms and Irving and all that stuff, where, where the automotive repair facilities would be the Midas or the Minnifees and that type.
Yeah, or a Jiffy Lube or something like that, and I think that was, the goal was not to take a gas and convenience store and then put a Jiffy Lube on this side and a Midas on the other side, and all of a sudden, you know, we had this big, huge thing.
Big plaza, got it.
Yeah.
And on the, on Section H, is the parking, is, you know, parking spaces, no more parking, no more parking spaces than required under the ordinance. But then it says, no filling station locations shall be counted towards the required parking requirements. Where did that come from?
That's something from Lee J, I think, right?
Yeah.
I think that was Lee J, yeah.
I mean, the purpose behind that is to minimize the asphalt as much as possible.
Well, we're talking about kind of the layout here. In I, we talk about, and every new gas station and convenience store has to have three EV charging stations. And I'm wondering why we are making a business decision for a business owner. If they want them, they can put them in, if they don't want them, and they think that it's gonna cost a lot of money, and I'm not gonna get much for it. I mean, isn't it the business owner's decision whether they want EV or not? And if they don't, then they're gonna lose that business, and if they think they can get it, then.
I would agree with Paul, it's like telling them they have to have air, or they have to have water available, or something like that.
Yeah, I, I just don't see why we should do that. I know it sounds nice, it sounds environmentally nice, but I think it's the business owner's choice and not ours.
I had that one locked, though.
I had a question more next to it, too.
As I said, it, it, I, I see that, you know, more and more stations are gonna start offering.
I think encouraged, exactly.
So, I'm not really familiar with the, the EV charging, but they have the, the long-term charges and the quick charges, correct? So, if we have three charging stations, and it's not the quick charges, are those cars gonna be parked there for an hour, taking up three parking spots?
Exactly.
Customers want to come in and out.
Not longer.
As, you know, so.
Yeah.
I, I, I think it's a great idea. I think, as I said, I think more and more you're gonna be seeing, you know, I, I think, actually, probably start seeing those, you know, separate charging stations.
Well, that, that's my thought, is that if you, if you, if you forced the, a automotive convenience store, not even, you know, gas station, but automotive convenience store is what the, the specification is, if you make them have EV charging, you know, when they don't want it, you're adding cost to their business. But if they don't want it, and somebody else does, then they can start their own business down the street. They don't have to worry about most of this stuff, because they're no longer a gas station, they're an EV charging station. And half of these regulations go away.
Regulation coming up. You guys get to work again.
Half these fuel-based concerns go away, and then you're just left with an automotive, you know, convenience store with EV charge. So that's a separate business, and, you know, we shouldn't be making another, I mean, I support electric vehicles as much as anybody who doesn't have one yet can, but, you know, it's.
I, I agree, no.
Yeah, requirement's already out there. If you adopt the IECC 2021 code, it requires all new buildings to have X number of charging stations. UNE just went through it with their new facility in Portland that I'm working on. They have to have a charging station for every parking spot out there, whether it's used or not, but it has, the infrastructure has to be put there, so there are requirements coming.
Which code, did you say the 2021, IECC?
2021, yep.
Yeah, MUBEC hasn't switched to the 2021 code yet.
Portland and surrounding areas have, and they're enforcing it.
But we haven't, the town would have to vote to move to 2021 or wait from MUBEC to update, which would probably be another six months. But once that comes into play anyways, then, once the 2021 codes come into play, then they're required to do that anyways under the code, because I won't be able to give them a building permit if they don't present that, so.
So again, it kinda just goes back to redundancy, right?
So, we can take this up for now, and when we're ready to accept those, those codes, then it'll become part of the policy.
It'll become part of the code naturally, by nature of the beast, because the town of Berwick adopted MUBEC, so.
So it's not a Berwick thing, you have to do this, it's just what you gotta do. If we want them to be here, you gotta do it.
It's the entire, it's the entire state, if you wanna, once that's adopted, anybody who's adopted MUBEC in the state, which is most of your over 4,000 populations.
So far, it sounds like the state's running the workshop here.
Well, you know, we like that.
They have a heavy feeling in that.
So, well, speaking, speaking of the state running the workshop, there was a traffic study done, which was pretty significant, and I don't know who paid for that, but. Oh, the one you said. I don't think it was the state.
We paid, we paid about 10%, of it, but it was by our MPO, which is S M P D C. It's a subsidiary, it's called CACS, County Area Comprehensive Transportation System. So it was part of, part of a grant we got to do that study.
And it was pretty comprehensive and had, you know, a lot of good ideas in it. The one thing that I was absolutely floored by was, I mean, we are only talking on Route 4 about a 2.1 mile stretch of highway, which is 55 miles an hour, and on a two-lane highway. Now, yes, they're, they're proposing turn lanes and signs for deer crossings and, and those kind of things, and that's fine, and I love it. I love it all, but 55 miles an hour at a, at a turn-in for a filling station is way too fast. And when we take a look at other areas where there are filling stations, I, it, I'm hard pressed to find one over 35 miles an hour. Even at Elliott on 236, where you have Cumberland Farms and Irving stations, it goes down to 35 in that zone. So, so I'm really concerned, because Jerry and I live close enough to hear the crashes, so we've heard them. And the, you know, it's not a number for us, because, you know, there was a dead person up on the road on Route 4, and the, the engine from their car was in a field across the road. So, those are the kind of crashes that happen when you're going 55 miles an hour.
Well, let's, let's be clear. People go a lot faster than 55 miles an hour down that road. And, and my concern is not necessarily just, you know, fuel stations and convenience stores and stuff like that. It's hard to turn anywhere down that road, whether you're going to do the landscaping stuff, whether you're trying to, you know, go down to one of the stores.
Amen.
Try pulling out.
Amen.
So, you know, if we can change it, I would love to, but.
We don't, we don't have the opportunity, that's a state road, and they posted.
Can I, can I make you guys all not like me again?
Go ahead.
You guys are liking me too much this meeting, I gotta go back, revert. If I recall correctly from the traffic study, the average speed on that road is, was actually during the traffic study, 53 miles an hour. And the other thing being that, if I'm not mistaken in what I had read, the way that the speed limit will be reduced is if there are more openings into and out of the road, because it requires people to slow down, which lowers the average speed, which makes the state in turn lower the speed.
So encouraging business actually lowers the speed limit.
They do, they come and do a, they come and do a traffic study, and it's.
So a lower body count, huh?
Well, if you, if you, if you have people turning, people generally will have to slow down. I mean, people, people are gonna be people, and there's always gonna be that one lead foot, and y'all can just leave me right out of this conversation, because we're gonna pretend I drive the speed limit. I do in the town car, leave me alone. When people are driving and people have to slow down to turn, it lowers the average. When the average is lowered, then the state has the right to lower the speed limit. But as long as it's a clear slate, straight shot, and people can go 55, the state has to allow them to go 55. Basically, I think it's a matter of, well, this is what we're doing, because if we don't, then it's gonna be too much for our jobs.
So we need a bigger body count before we can lower the speed.
Well, the, it, it, I've been involved in the, I've been involved in the Route 4 thing for, you know, nine years now. We did our first traffic study when I first came on, and Mark Pendigas' daughter was killed. And that led us, we, we sat down with the state D O T, we sat down with our police force. Tim had, Tim Town had his radar out there constantly, and the number of people going faster than 55 was minor, you know, minor. As said, most of the people were going slower. Almost every deadly accident is because people are being jerks. It's not, has nothing to do with the speed limit, has nothing to do with the road, it's with people being jerks. Passing on a hill on a curve, you know, not paying attention, slamming into the back of school buses. Is, you know, is lowering the speed limit to 35 isn't gonna stop people from being jerks.
I think what happens, though, at 55 miles an hour, being a jerk is a lot more deadly than at 35 miles an hour. So, I, I agree with you that, you know, people make bad mistakes and bad judgments when they're driving, but at 55, it kills people.
It is, and, you know, if you look at, you know, the high-impact crash zones that the state does, is I think Wilton Street and the corner of School Street and 236 are higher incidence.
Yeah.
Traffic is just lower speeds, as you said, so.
The problem with that area right there is coming around that corner, they're doing 55 right before Kind Farm. You're pulling out of Pond Road, you're pulling out, you don't have a car. Soon as you pull out, there's a guy on your bumper, because he was doing 55.
So, when they do a traffic study, if it's 53, and we put in, hopefully, like I was saying, when we do turns, even with a turn lane, if you're passing somebody in a turn lane, you're not feeling super comfortable, zip, I mean, some people are, but. Part of that, part of it, the traffic study has center median islands, too. So those should help to serve the traffic comm. If not, we need to do stuff to do traffic comming. And I think a goal would be to design the street to get to 50 miles an hour, then they can drop to 50. And then, I mean, we go, go from there, but 50 seems obtainable, and once they do a traffic study, and they measure that people are going 50, then they drop the speed limit to 50. That's, that's, that's their response to speed limits. They go out, they do a traffic study, and they make the speed limit what people are going.
Yeah, we're from the state, we're here to help.
They all race a little bit, or once a week, the next nine years.
Well, we're all, well, we're all not happy with the state. So all I've, all I'm seeing that I indicated, I'll be honest, you guys caught me a little unaware, so I didn't really expect to be asked about monitoring wells. They have them in regards to getting variances for gas stations built on aquifers, but what they actually require is, there's like three different types of testing, depending on the type of testing. Depending on the type of testing, for anything, they have, the state has to be notified and they have to come in if it is 0.1 inch of fluid off on certain types of measurements and then up to 1% based on other types of testing. But that being said, their leak or discharge requirements is if it is 10 gallons or less, they don't have to report it within two hours to the commissioner. If they clean it up within 24 hours, maintain the log with all of the information. But if they see evidence of it on soil or water, including but not limiting to any tanker piping, excavation, nearby surface water, facility groundwater monitoring, anything like that, oil vapors on or under abutting properties, they have to call the commissioner and the commissioner shows up, they have a response team to investigate and cause the, the owner, the facility owner to pay for remediation that they do. So it's not like the difference would be if I thought something was going on, I'd have to go in and I'd have to give the facility person an opportunity to clean it. If there's a spill, the commissioner comes in, they clean it and the facility pays. So, they're actually more, they got more power.
I have a question, Mike. Of these automotive convenience store, I'm sorry, my throat. On A through N, are there any here that are not state regulations that you feel strongly about and you wouldn't want anything changed? I mean, let's just, like this one here, dumpsters are to have a set location. All dumpsters are to have covers and a fence surround, I'm assuming.
That was me.
That makes sense.
Because everybody wants them screened and I can't enforce the screening if they don't have a set location.
So Mike, are there any here that you would not want anything changed? Have people come to you with concerns or, some of these, you have to wonder where they came from, so that's why.
Well, most of them came from the public comment on how these things should, should be. We have, we've had Jeremy come in several times and Pat Bovair with Paul several times. Some of it, like the lighting.
Okay, lighting, so D.
Yep, canopy lighting, that's also in our lighting ordinance.
So D is a strong public one, is there any others that are strong public?
On B, when Lee J wrote this, he put down the three sides of the property shall be screened. But if you read the guidelines, it says if there's a residence, it should be a solid wall, not trees, because the person's there, you don't want the lights all going into their property. Just like if you look over at the ATM on Route 4. They did not have that fence up and every car that came through that ATM, their light shined into ours. We called Northeast Federal Credit Union, told them, the guy come out and look at it and they put the fence up the next week.
Okay, so it should be four.
It should be, well, solid.
Maybe, yeah, all right. And so that's, B is another strong.
So then the question.
Yeah, but a screening, we can, we can, as a planning board, we can kind of direct that and condition that on per case. I mean, having it on the three sides is probably good. Depending on where they are, it could depend on the type of screening.
Right.
Okay, so are there others that are strongly?
It says when abutting a residence, a fence of at least five feet in height is required in addition to the screening.
B subsection F.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully not chain-linked.
Well, should we just add that, when abutting to a residence, a solid fence?
Yeah, just put the word solid in.
Yeah.
They imply, you know, like a cinder block wall type fence, solid.
Not a picket fence.
Or Plexiglas or.
Or just run some, you know, chicken wire around it, you know.
I vote for the bright orange snow fence. Can we do that? Everybody loves that on their property, right?
The question came up about M, about the dumpsters and the screening, that's the town ordinance. All dumpsters are supposed to be screened.
But I'm the one that wanted the set location.
I put in for the set location, which I think makes a lot of sense.
Because then, if they have a set location where it can require them, it's easier to require screening on a set location than it is to say, well, okay, but they dropped my dumpster over here this week and then my dumpster over there next week. If it has a set location, it allows for us to be, well, the board, gives the board a little bit easier means as to dictate what they want for, I shouldn't say dictate, suggest what they want for screening. Gives me something on the site plan that I can fall back on that says, your dumpster is supposed to be here and you agreed to this type of surround and now you're not maintaining it, so fix it, basically is why it's like that. Because a lot of these, the ordinance requires dumpsters to have a surround, but it's really hard to, for me to get some teeth into it and enforce that without knowing where it's supposed to be. So, but if you guys want to shake that, I'll keep fighting with people when they whittle them around, I don't care.
No, it's totally fine.
You guys pay me to do whatever you want me to do.
No, I think that's an easy fix.
Mike, you're doing more important things than fighting about dumpsters.
And Mike said every, I mean, you guys are good at, whenever there's a plan in front of you asking where that dumpster's gonna be anyways, I think this just holds it right there, you know.
Just tells them in advance they need to mark it on the, it's marked as a spot.
It needs to be on the plan so we can expect it to be there.
I have a question, I have a question on letter A. Do we have a definition for how tall one story is in the land use ordinance, a number?
Yeah, good question.
Because I'll tell you a really quick story, there was a country singer who built a house in Nashville on the hill and he wanted three stories and the town ordinance didn't say how tall a story was. So he presented a plan with like 20-foot stories and with three of them and they had to let him do it and the very next moment after they approved it, they said, I introduce a motion to have a story defined as 10 feet, blah, blah, blah. Because if it's not defined, somebody could build one story.
100 feet tall.
Yeah.
I mean, would that be, I think that'd be better to make sure that that's clear in the design guideline, you know, the design guides and standards where we have it defined and then this is one story because that's what our guides and standards say.
Right, or, yeah.
I mean, or you guys.
I just, I just think it should be defined. It just should be defined somewhere and you can always refer to it as defined, you know, one story.
I'm wrapping it off to any building, it is a good backup.
I want to say that there is a set height standard already.
There is a height, I was just looking through definitions, as was James. There's no actual definition for story and I'm trying to wrap my brain up there. I can run next door and grab my, my, and actually I only have the 2021 IBC, but I can grab that and check to see if the, the IBC has a story thing. But pretty much throughout all of Berwick, there's a 35-foot height restriction for all buildings, period. Do you guys want me to run next door and grab my IBC?
Because even the buildings next door are capped at that.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, even if they did one 35-foot story, which, I gotta say, I, the code officer inspector, I mean, kinda wants to see that because it sounds kind of hella cool. Even if they did a 35-foot story, one-story building, that's the most they could do and they'd be done. But I don't see anybody.
The one-story, you would have, you know, your 25 feet of ceiling above you.
Yeah, exactly.
Let them eat that.
And then they could paint it blue with clouds on it and they'd be outside it inside all day long.
One, one question I had and you guys can consider this. So convenience stores in general in Berwick are conditional use in R1, R2, and R3. I would be okay with the hard press to say not permitted in R3 for an automotive convenience store. But I think it should be considered that R2 can be under conditional use. Because I think parts of that would, especially well.
Run that by me again?
So you think what, Cranberry Meadow Road would be okay?
Yeah, it's conditional use, you know, but if we're already allowing convenience store.
Pine Hill Road, you'd want it on Pine Hill Road.
We're already allowing convenience store based on.
Yeah, you have to let it, oh, no, that's what you're gonna do.
I mean, again, conditional means we can say no, right?
I mean, if we're already putting convenience right there, you're saying, hey, you can open a 7-Eleven right there if you wanted to or, you know, so.
There, there is a definition for neighborhood convenience store. So that would, I think they would be allowed in those zones, so like a slightly different.
So, yeah, there is, there was that, there was that place on School Street, the corner of Cranberry Meadow. That'd have been considered a neighborhood store, convenience store, James?
Yeah, neighborhood convenience store is 1,500 square feet or less.
And again, that allows there's your EV charging station if that's what they want to open. You know, I mean, that, that's all it wants to be and you want to have somebody be, and like I said, it's conditional. Like I said, I totally put the hard press no in R3, I just think it'd be something to consider.
That's a separate definition, so neighborhood convenience store is allowed in almost every zone.
So if, just for semantics here, instead of calling it gas and convenience, maybe we should call it fuel and convenience, just so we have some control over people putting in EVs as well as gas stations.
Well, I, I say we keep it the same because if we have that delineation between the electric vehicles, there's not gonna be any spilled gas. I mean, that's basically the major concern with this. So if we keep it split, I mean, was to say that someone, like you said, opens a convenience store in an R2 and just has five parking spots that you can come charge your electric vehicle and that's not, they shouldn't have to adhere to all these standards for a fuel station. I mean, other than maybe we should add something separately so that at least they have the power to go to it.
That can be your project that is coming here.
Write a whole standard for the possibility of incoming EVs charging.
Actually, I'm going to make note of that because that's one of the things that, one of my 50 winter projects was throwing.
Only 50?
Only, well, I stopped counting at 50, I stopped counting at 50, but.
She has a doom pile.
I'll see about adding some, I do have a doom pile and a doom bag and a doom box, but we're not talking about that today, you know what? Stay out of my office. So I, I will add that to the list when we do the, for the land use updates that I want to look at and propose to James to propose to you guys for next year. Because I, I have to say, there's a part of me, having done code enforcement, knowing what it costs for the electric charging stations to be put in on a residence that thinks that you definitely right keeping it up.
The solar arrays?
Actually, that would be pretty handy, look.
Then you get solar charging.
Solar over the parking for the EVs with the charging stations and then they're in the shade and life is good. But, no, I mean, there's a lot of people that would probably do solar vehi, you know, EV, now you're gonna be saying solar vehicles, electric vehicles, but don't have the finances with which to wire their homes with that or don't want to take that risk, that would probably use a neighborhood charging station, so. That's probably a good money racket, maybe that would be my next little.
Paul and I have been talking about that already.
You gotta cover.
You gotta cover, all right.
This is Italian.
Anything else on the fuel station before I close my four chapters?
I just want to go back to the time again, that we should at least put, if it's gonna be, if, if the pump's gonna be open, we're still gonna allow it to be 24 hours if it goes by the main regulations. Because right now, if you're just reading it, like, it just sounds like it's only gonna be open between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM.
So what you're proposing is like the convenience store hours to be, fuel stations to be 24, can be 24 hours provided all state things are met, is that what you're saying?
Right, exactly. That way, the words in there, instead of just saying 6 to 11, because that can be interpreted in different ways.
Four to 11.
Yeah, four to 11. I wrote down four to 10. I wrote down four to 10. If you drive through Summersworth at 9:00 PM, nearly everything's closed. It's, I've gone through that and been like, I can't, I can't even stop for Band-Aids. Everything's closed, I have to go to Walmart to do anything.
Close COVID side marks all over the line.
Seven's too late, I think, ten's good.
I mean, we have noise ordinance, it goes 9, 10.
Except for 4th of July and Christmas.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think 4:00 AM to 10:00 PM makes the most sense. People can get gas to go to nail the shipyard, no noise coming after the noise ordinance comes into place.
And I think that's fair enough for the cash payers too. I mean, I, me personally, I pay cash on almost everything, so I mean, having a 4:00 AM that's open that.
Okay, grandpa.
Hey, there's a lot of people still.
Visa prepaid cards, you buy them at Walmart, keep one in your, keep one in your glove box for the 24 hour.
That's still too much work, that's still too much work.
And they expire after 800 days.
Or they charge you per month for usage fee, yeah.
I got a car 10 years ago, now it's empty. Actually, I owe them money.
Sorry, Mike, I'm.
No, it's okay.
Never leave home without it.
I mean, is there any other thing that we should touch on? I mean, I think that for the accessory apartments, the dwelling units, the 190, that shall be more than 190, I think that number fits better than the 400 that was there previous.
It's the state minimum.
Right.
I don't think we need to have our own special minimum unless anybody has a specific reason why.
Well, if someone wants a real tiny house, it's gonna be.
Oh, I mean, like 190 smaller than my bedroom.
19 by 10.
Yeah, exactly, so it's, it's not.
I mean, that's still pretty big for a tiny home.
But it's an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, yeah.
The only one I had in, in solar farms was just cleaning up after. Yeah, just, you know, what is the cap and it's got November, no date of 2020. You know, just, I think, just cleaning up that verbiage on that line.
Right, and should it be 2022 or?
2023.
Yeah.
Make it, make it November 30th. November 30th, 2023, if it passes, then that's, you know.
All right, I'll be the devil's grab, you can't, why your cap?
Well.
Why your cap?
Because there's a lot of people.
Do we have a cap for anything other than marijuana?
Which we're eliminating.
Hopefully. No, you're right, you're right. I, I would agree with you on that. What it really comes down to right now is the power stations, CMP. If we add another big solar array, they're gonna have to pay to update the, the grid basically. We're almost at capacity for solar farms as it is.
But that's where the capacity letter comes into play, right?
Right, and that's why we have a capacity letter saying that CMP can handle it. I mean, we're kind of, it's kind of restricting it right there at that point.
That's, that's natural restriction, but here's my question. Could somebody, in theory, build a solar farm and, I mean, without the capacity letter and just have it sit idle?
Not turn it on?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, does that work?
Like, outside the cap, is that, is that?
Well, they'd have to come here to get a, a conditional use permit for it.
Yeah.
Even just to put it there?
Oh, yeah, yeah. If it's over what, 2 megawatts or something like that, that has to go to the planning board to get a, a half megawatt.
So this cap would stop them from even getting a conditional use.
To be able to construct.
Even if they did have a capacity letter.
All right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of, you know, using all our farmland for solar and things like that. But, again, it boils down to, it's, well, talking about cannabis stores originally, is we need to put a permit, we need to put a cap on it. And I made that argument, is what about breweries? Are there too many breweries for Berwick? If we had four more breweries wanting to move to Berwick, would we want to put a cap on the number of breweries?
I guess that issue would be just the rate of how many in a short amount of time, because.
The issue that I had, the marijuana stuff was not, you know, a specific cap. It was that it was new and we had to make sure we ironed out all the regulations, the town permits and everything like that, before we took on more. Now we've kind of stabilized, we have the rules.
And the state guidelines have been a lot stricter in the past couple of years.
In terms of the solar farms, it seems like we're making the restrict, you know, the, the, the conditions now and that the capacity letter would be the natural cap.
Yeah, I think as far as solar farms are concerned, you know, I, I have somewhat of an aversion to them ever since the one on 236 off Pigtail went in, which is so visible right from the road. Also, if you go into Wells on 9B, there's one there that is god-awful. It's terrible. And so I don't want solar farms to become a blight on our community so that people driving through says, oh yeah, I was at Berwick, they got so many solar farms there.
We heard the same thing about cannabis. We heard the same thing about cannabis.
Yeah, but a cannabis store, look at Kind Farm, it looks pretty, pretty darn nice.
Who wouldn't even know what it is from the other side?
My neighbor walked over there around Christmas, the first time it opened, trying to buy a Christmas tree.
Thinking it was a, you got it.
She thought it was a farm store.
I bet you you got a very good Christmas tree.
So, yeah, she smokes crazy stuff. But, but the fact is, a solar farm is never attractive. I mean, you can't, there's nothing you can do to a solar farm to make that eye appealing.
It depends on your, I, I don't care for it, but I don't find it, you know, appalling.
So, but.
I don't find it to be more appalling than the power lines going down the road, you know.
I think that comes down to more screening.
Well, that's what, that's what C is, solar farms shall be screened from continuous view.
And, and how it's screened and non-visible from major roads, I think is important.
Those have been standards that we've been adding after every, every solar farm that comes in. Right. No, I agree with you, I'd agree with you on that.
That's my, that's my, you know, and Jeremy's gonna hate me when I say this, but, is, you know, if a landowner has a piece of land, and we already put a lot of restrictions on it, I think that a solar farm is more pleasing to me than going up off of, off of Old Route 4 and seeing all those houses going in the field there, you know? I find that disgusting, you know?
I don't hate that, I'm with you.
It is, is, those are the things, you know?
Right, trying to keep the town with that rural feel.
Something like that, you know, like the houses off of Old Route 4, is they should have been made to do a cluster development and have the rest of that land available for farming, you know?
So, I think what Tom's trying to say is, you know, we're getting into perception, whether it's a housing development, or it's, you know, I mean, people don't like, some people don't like how the edge looks. I think it looks great, but some people aren't happy with that design. Some people aren't gonna be happy with solar panels because, you know, either conspiracy theories or they just don't like how it looks, or whatever. And, you know, and some people don't like the marijuana stores, I've heard people say they don't want tattoo parlors in town because they don't want to see it, and stuff like that. And I, to me, I think the same way as Tom, like, if you don't want to see a tattoo parlor there, buy the store, then don't put a tattoo parlor there. But I think the screening is, is the most important part of this right here, is that if you, if you're screening it, a continuous landscape, six feet in height, I mean, that place out on Wells, I agree, doesn't look great, because it's just a big pit of solar panels.
With all due respect to both boards, I was working in Wells when that was put in, and you realize there was literally nothing else they could do with that because we had to stop their work several times because there was nothing but trash, so just play nice with Irish tonight.
I'm not, I'm not mad that they do it, I just don't think it looks nice.
It should have had more screening, yes, but there was really nothing else they could have done with the land.
It's got twigs thrown in front of it.
Just saying. But yes. I agree, it should have been screened better.
You know, if they put a row of evergreens in front of the road, you'd never even know it was there.
And that's, and that's what it should have been. That should have been a requirement.
It might take five to 10 years for them to get there, but, I mean.
Or, or a privacy fence, either which way, you wouldn't even know it's there.
But between, between the screening and the capacity letter for Central Main Power, I mean, that, that basically holds it as it is, because the power station, from what we've heard, the power station can't really take another one.
No, I, I had, I had a client who wanted to put a place, a power station, or, you know, solar farm in Lebanon. And CMP basically said, no, we just can't fit it out there anymore.
It's gonna cost millions.
They, they're like, we have to update everything, and it's like, that's not happening anytime soon.
And I'm not sure who asked the question, because we've all been talking, but I don't, whoever asked the question of would it prevent them from building it and not hooking on, was that you?
Yeah.
So the cost of constructing those, they are not going to do that, especially with the cost of constructing it, maintaining the parcel that it's on, to get absolutely nothing back, and the decommissioning bonds they have to apply, there's no place that, even without that letter, there's nobody that's gonna put that in.
I mean, people on buses, it's pretty crazy to do that.
Okay, outside of Captain Tesla.
Do we need F at all?
I, I personally don't think so.
I don't think so, either.
Okay, so we line F out?
Les, do you have any opinion on that? Seeing how you're on Zoom.
I'm sorry, hey, can I cut in here for a minute?
Yes, it is.
I have my, I have my daughter tonight, and I really need to know.
Okay, do you have anything to weigh in on, before you go?
No, I, I'm not gonna comment on this, I think that, I think you answered the thing that I would say, and, you know, I'm sure most of you know that the solar farm on 236 is my solar farm, so.
I didn't know that, surprise.
I don't, I don't disagree, though, with everything everybody said, and I think Irish, I heard that, that the one in Wells was built on basically a dump. And, so I think that's a good use for it. I, I'm a fan of solar panels, but I, I agree also that, you know, now that mine's built, I agree that we. Yeah. But, you know, honestly, I think that we do need to limit them a little bit, you know, because we don't want to just be a town of solar, like we were a tannery for years. And I think that the self-regulation is gonna come in, because one, you know, when we did my solar farms, because Governor Mills had 2 billion dollars of appropriate energy, and that one used up, and, you know, I, I know the company that did burn solar farms is no longer, you want solar farms in Maine? So I think that, much like the marijuana business, you know, it's gotten a little bit saturated, and the grant money has dried up. But, I, so I agree, I don't, I don't want to, but I don't want to speak a lot more of it.
Okay, and I'll be calling you on Monday to talk about screening your solar, no, I'm kidding, have a great weekend, Les.
All right, take care.
Did we, did we talk about doing different, different store sizes in R1 and RCI, did we settle on that?
We have not, we should do that right now. Would we all be in agreeance on setting two different square footage sizes of the gas, automotive, storing gas stations?
My notes say that you guys said that you're going to do a standard of 3,000 and up to 5,000 square feet would be considered for conditional.
I thought we said 25.
2500 up to 5, okay.
So 2,500 will be standard?
Right.
And up to 5,000 is conditional.
With the rest approvable with, as an exception.
Okay.
For both zones?
Yeah, for both zones.
I mean, it comes down to our discretion, so if in R1, we're gonna.
Yep, just across the way.
We're gonna be more picky about it.
Right.
Especially when you go back to, if we want to take the designing guy.
So before Les leaves, I just want to ask this Article 7, where we're changing the fees to, to builders and contractors who are building subdivisions and that sort of thing. I thought that if a builder was doing a subdivision, then we decided, as we do in many cases, that we needed an outside engineering study to be done, I thought that was paid for by the applicant.
It is.
And not from these fees, but the way this is written, it sounds like, oh no, this comes from the fees.
No, there's an application fee that is revenue to the town, and then there's a review escrow. So there's two separate fees. There's a fee, and there's a review escrow.
Okay.
So two separate pots of money.
And what, what happens to the review escrow?
Review escrow gets drawn down, and then anything that's left over goes back to the applicant.
So they have to put up money for the review in the escrow, and that's held until the review is done.
And that's where the SNPDC review comes from, and the third-party review comes from.
Got it.
And then the application fee is what actually helps pay for the town's work on the project, which is a lot more work than I ever.
Keep the lights on in here when you guys are planning more.
Actually, it's a lot more work than I, than I had thought it was prior to Terry coming in and taking that over, so.
Okay, then, the other, the other thing I have, thank you for clarifying that for me, the other thing I had is this village overlay district addition request. So we have one person wanting to add themselves to the village overlay. I thought that we don't do that, that we don't do that for one person, that, oh, we'll change the line for you.
We usually try and wait for two or three people to come, but we haven't had a set minimum of how many people. It's usually when someone comes in and says they want to be added to it, as long as they're butting that line, we usually just bring that to vote.
Yeah, I really don't have a, a problem with that, but I just thought that we weren't doing it for an individual, per se, that we did it for kind of a community.
Well, technically, I think it's for an organization, if that makes you feel any better. And it will actually make certain aspects of my life a little bit easier in my job, if that.
Because then it's under the village overlay standards, so.
And I can handle a few things that are happening.
Well, then they have to go by the guidelines and standards.
That's right.
Where in the other zone, they don't. So they're a lot more stringent on what things are supposed to look like, and.
And Irish has a few things she needs to talk to them about already, and that would just be.
So adding them isn't necessarily a bad thing.
A question on that, since it's brought up, if we're gonna move the line for that one lot, should we move it around the whole area there?
He's playing SimCity, he wants to know if he wants to keep it.
I think I said it to Mike, or you said it earlier, I asked, why not just go to the bell?
That was your knee-jerk reaction, is that what you said, Les?
It might, it might, it might really be worth just proposing it for the entire, like, anything that's in the village commercials on, to be in the village overlay district.
Because next year, somebody.
Looks like five properties.
There's five lots right there.
Okay, wait a minute.
They're saying this whole area.
We have, yeah, we have two proposals on the table between the board and the town manager, one which is that neighborhood of five lots, the other which is the entire VC.
Or that block to keep it, to keep it, to keep it simple, that's, that's fine.
I'm thinking just that block.
Just that block.
Yeah.
That was my question when I saw it.
Are you talking about over to Bell Street? Over to Bell Street?
I think, I think the.
Which Bell Street has requested in the past to be in it.
They have.
But, you're right, but since there's nothing abutting to it yet, it's hard to kind of bring that into it.
That block. And once you accept those five lots, now you have new abutters who are gonna then abot.
Right. I think we should let that, leave that to public comment, see what the actual landowners want to do.
It was beaten up to Oak Street, actually, because originally it was cut off right here, and then it slowly.
So I'm, I'm okay with the five lots there, or the five properties.
Yeah.
It just, doesn't look right, just one little blip. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a matter of standards, though, because what happens if two of those buildings don't want to be in that?
Do we have to ask the owners?
Yeah, I think we should. I mean, I think a, a public comment on that would be good, because then we can get other people's.
Yeah, because when we originally set it up, there weren't pieces of property in there that were not included.
Right.
And they added it in afterwards, I remember, like, Rick Burns, Rick and Andrea Burns, they weren't included originally, but they have to be, I didn't know either.
And we usually average between two or three people a year that usually try and get into this.
Just, on, on this, does this have to go before the voters?
Yes, yes, this has to get voted in.
So then I guess the question would be, how can we make, this is a living document, as we've discussed, but it does have to go before the select board officially, correct? Next week?
I think we should just stick with this one and work towards getting a better idea of the rest of the zone.
The only other thing we could do is I could go out tomorrow and knock on the other doors, leave notes, and ask if they would want to be included.
It's too early to do a public hearing for next week, so.
Yeah, this would, yeah, the next, it would have to go towards the next vote. I mean, I think, you guys, the heads are in the right place, but I don't think we have enough time for that.
The heart's in the right place, the head checked out about half a year ago.
And the body is just not willing, so.
I mean, if we had, if we had, like, another two or three more people from that area, like that little block, come in and say that they'd want it, then I would say, yeah, but I.
So right now, we'll just do the.
I know that the, the, the standards are a little bit more strict, but it also allows you to do more on that property, but some people don't want that.
They would need the right to, they have the right to review it before.
Right, they should help make that decision.
I just didn't know where it was living documented, if we could get them to determine whether they want it to be or not, and then get it before, but no.
There'll be a vote in June, for sure.
Oh, yeah.
If they, if they feel.
Was it the second week of June?
Yeah.
Second week of June?
We can go back to, get it in less than a year, you know? But, we can focus on the person that wants it.
I just have to say it. Some people know.
Yep.
Not everyone knows that on second Tuesday.
They're not gonna, they're, they're still not gonna know.
Yeah.
We know from experience.
I think there should be, like, a banner right over the bridge, that, you know, for the first, like, two weeks, like, right at the beginning of June, it just goes up, in two weeks, we're voting.
I'm gonna hold you around, this is, this is gonna last.
So, any, anything else before Les has to go, I know he's got a four-year-old sitting on his lap, probably ripping his mustache out, so.
No, I think, I think.
That's a lot of fun.
Thank you, Les.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, and I'll see you next week.
Have a good weekend.
So we're crossing out F for the solar standards, for the cap? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Find out when you present the Tuesday.
Right, yeah. Well, I mean, you guys can always change it later on, so I mean.
You can add egg back in if it really felt like it.
Right.
Push us along, it's certainly sad.
Right.
And then make them look like, hey.
Yeah, because there's still another public comment on it, at that point, a public hearing on it, so if there's anything that does need to get changed.
But you all made us sit here for an hour and a half, two hours.
We're not done.
And then you undo everything? I swear to God, I will be at the next select board meeting.
I was like, put this back in.
I'll be at your next select board public hearing, and I will have things to say until midnight.
Ours caps right now.
There's a four-minute limit there.
Holy shit.
So are the desired standards, or is there any more?
No, wait a second.
Wait.
We haven't done the marijuana amendments.
Well, the marijuana amendments, it was just eliminating the cap, right?
The cap and allowing.
Yeah, caregivers.
Yeah, and it's co-ops and caregivers.
Well, not co-ops, just caregivers.
Co-ops from two to three.
Right, right, we're still not allowing co-ops. Maybe just change the definition from two medical marijuana cultivators to three. So that way it allows, let's say, a husband and wife to grow at their, their own house.
So at three, it becomes a co-op.
Right, and that's not allowed.
So co-ops are still not allowed, but this way, if, you know, if Don and his beautiful wife want to both become growers, they can both grow in the same location.
Right.
But if you move in with them, you can't do it in the same place, because then you're a co-op, and Paul, we're just not playing with you, we're taking our bucket and kayaking around.
Well, in my opinion of this, is that we don't monitor this very well at all currently, so why expand it? I mean, people do what they, they do, and, because, I mean, the terminology here is adult cultivation claiming a location as a primary residence, and then in the next one, we're talking about home care, two caregivers who claim the same residency. So, I mean, the residents are not, but, you know, I'm.
We changed the rules because there are people that follow the rules.
Right.
And, so, there might be people out there who are already breaking this rule, and we're not, and we're not getting after them as hard as we should or could.
Or at all.
Or able to.
Well, the state's, the state's rules on this does allow two people at a, at a home residence to do it.
So basically, we changed the rule for people that are gonna follow the rules, cuz there are people that will be like, okay, we can't do it. They're just not gonna do it because we have the rule that says they can't.
But don't, it's sick.
So I think that brings us in line with the state?
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, but don't, instead of saying claim, don't we wanna say something more like R?
R to resident, yeah, R resident.
Yeah, no.
R residence.
I'm not, I'm not interested in doing this at all.
Two caregivers who share the same residency rather than claim.
Claim, share.
Share.
Yep.
Cuz.
Who share.
Cuz somebody can claim something and not.
Not actually be realistic, yeah.
Yeah, cuz my wife really doesn't believe me.
But you might claim that she does.
So both of the, uh, both of the definitions have the word claim, so, or claim or claiming, so change both of those to share or sharing.
Yes.
I, I'm still not comfortable with this at all.
With either or, yeah.
Whether the word claim is there or not. I just don't think that we monitor this well at all and.
The state monitors that one.
Yeah, right, yeah, and. There's actually.
And the Easter Bunny's coming too. Uh, but no, I, I just don't believe it, so.
Is there a problem?
Yeah, there's a problem.
As I've talked to the chief of police multiple times about this and he's, that there are no problems.
Right.
And it's one of, one of the top three income earners for this town.
I'm not even going about income. It is, I, I know I can drive around town or most any town and, you know, drive past residents and, you know, smell marijuana. And, but if the neighbors aren't complaining and the neighborhood isn't complaining, is I don't see the problem with that. It is when you say we're not enforcing it, we're not, and there's a problem, where is the problem? That's what I wanna know, not just that we're not enforcing it, where is the problem?
Well, there, there are specifics and they've been reported and there, nothing is ever done about them, ever.
Who they reported to the.
In a couple of years.
The, the chief of police, the police here in borough, the state, you know.
To the town.
To the town. The code enforcement.
Well, they have to, they have to, I just checked with James, because we haven't had any new caregivers come in, but they're supposed to apply for a home business license and something that James and I had discussed previously, that's gonna, one of the fifty, fifty projects in the Winter Doom pile is creating an annual business registry, so annual or biennial, so businesses will have to register every year or every other year, so we'll be able to keep an eye on things that way.
Right.
Because I'll be following up with people to see if they are.
Along with Paul's, what Paul's saying, a while back, I think the planning board, and I asked Dave Andreessen when he was here, he was working on a list to give to the planning board of who's doing what, what permits are active and all this, that never came to bear.
Well, that I apologize for, but that's not.
For home occupations?
For home occupation, marijuana permits, weed growing, whether it's.
Yeah, but making public records of that is just allowing people that do bad things to do bad things to.
Target them.
Oh, yeah.
I'm looking at it from the standpoint.
I'm looking at it as a resident of a house that if, if you're a caregiver and you have to publicize that your house is a caregiving location, you're opening, other than just your neighbors that might know, you're opening up the whole can of worms to public access information.
Are you guys looking for numbers? Just numbers, not addresses?
It was addressed when we had the permits, that not all of them are being used. I asked Dave, could you tell me who is and who is not using them, so we can look at.
Oh, so what you asked for were the ones that were issued that are kinda just.
But then you go back to the home occupation and its definition, it says you have to be
a resident of the place to claim occupation.
Yes.
And it doesn't say there that you can have ten employees coming and going all day long.
No, the state regulates it till one employee per caregiver.
Well, then there are violation for that.
And our home business license.
Whoever is, you have to speak with OCP about that.
I have, they came out and they gave them a two-week notice and they took everything out and nothing was done about it.
Well, if they have to take stuff out, something was done about it.
No, they took it out.
Well, they put it back in after, after they left.
Then you have to point it out again.
Yeah.
So if you're not, but if you're not pointing it out again, it's not a problem.
I know how OCP works and it's usually three strikes to run. If you keep attacking them because they're doing something wrong, eventually they will pull their license.
There's not a specific, there's not a problem.
But the thing is, you know, the town's definition of home occupation is you have to live there. If there's one employee allowed, that's fine, but when you have ten or more coming and going all day long, that doesn't.
Well, that's a violation of their home occupancy permit, so.
And nobody's doing anything and I've complained about that. So, end of my speech.
Complained about that too.
To the town, numerous times.
What place?
One of them.
The person who's asking me right now?
I'll put it in writing for you tomorrow.
Okay.
Cuz I think that's what she's asking for.
Yeah.
Because right now, that is Tom's question, right now, what is the specific, there isn't.
Yeah.
There is not a specific.
Jerry, you know, you know damn well that anything you ask me to look into, I will look into.
I know, but I'm just saying.
I don't think, I don't think I failed you yet, my friend.
Well.
So we're trying.
The dumpster issue, there's ten dumpsters on Route Four that aren't screened for the town ordinance.
Yep, and I'm, and I'm working on those, but I'm also working on.
That's a list of a ton of letting violations of Route Four too.
Yep. But that's what I'm saying, we got ordinances that say one thing and it's not your fault.
No, no, I'm playing catch-up and you, you know that and you do give me grace, but the urgent things come first and, and I've taken care of the more urgent ones for you.
But the longer you let something go and not have it addressed, the harder it is to really address it.
That's why I try to get on top of them and I, that's why I want you to let me know what's going on, because anybody lets me know what's going on, it becomes, honestly, Jerry, it's even worse than that for me, because it's not just the longer it goes on, the harder it is to rope it in, the longer it goes on that you're doing it and people see you doing it, then Mike's gonna do it, and then Mike's gonna do it, and then Larry, Darrell and Darrell are gonna do it, that was really weird right there, but, you know, it spreads, it spreads, and that's why I need you to let me know, so I can get on top of these, and we're getting things caught up finally to where I can start working on the non-urgent matters. So please do let me know, by all means, anybody listening tonight on the, on the thing, let me know. I wanna take care of anything and everything and get this town the way you guys want it.
A lot of it comes down to just being a good neighbor.
Yes.
And that's, that's plain and simple, some people are not good neighbors and, and that's why you have problems.
And fences make good neighbors.
That's why I asked for a fence.
And remember, six foot or under does not require a permit, if you go over six feet, call me, people.
We're working on it, we're getting emails going back and forth.
All right.
In progress.
Perfect.
So just, you know, I, I don't know what we're doing tonight, if we're voting on anything or waiting.
We have to vote, there's no way to vote.
You have to vote to send it to the select board.
I'm not in favor of this number five on the marijuana amendments.
We don't do anything. We're part of a workshop, this is their meeting.
Okay, we're not, we're not in favor of, hold on.
Well, I'm in favor of number five.
So we can go, so.
That's after the workshop.
Mike, yeah, so we can go over the design guide and then we can, once the workshop's closed, then we can vote on each one as a board.
Okay.
Can you have a comment before we do the design seminar?
I didn't bring the agenda.
I don't think so.
Well, it's not.
What we already talked about, not anything.
Right.
I just.
Jeremy, if you want to, if you wanna speak, you can.
Yeah, that's fine.
Couple quick things.
Hold on, let's get you a microphone.
Thank you.
I wanted to speak to a couple points, first of all, this is great, we should do this more. It's really, it is, no, seriously, it's amazing watching, this is government in action, this is incredible, everybody's here for free, working hard to take care of our town, it is incredible. It's sad that I'm the only person as a citizen sitting here watching this, but I would encourage people at home not to be discouraged by anything on the internet discouraging you from participating in democracy, it is impressive and it is important and we should all be here.
Agreed.
That said, I wanted to touch on something that, that Rick brought up, and that was the, this, this notion of these homes, a home that can be built where it has, you know, thirty-foot stories and, I think what I have learned in the last three years of civic engagement is that we spend a lot of our energies in fear of lawyers and in fear of these, these, and a lot of this is, is us preparing, steadying ourselves for, for corporations that are gonna possibly show up with lawyers that are gonna read through all our documents and then say, aha, I found a loophole and I'm gonna, now I'm going to make sure that I screw you, because you're Burke and not Elliott or whatever, I've found the way to, to, to address something that, that creates success for me and failure for you. And, and, and this may not be factual, but this is my sense of, of where a lot of our energies are put, and I would like to think that sometime in the next year, we could speak to SMPDC and our attorney about some language that could be put in our regulations that state, were that to happen, it reverts to an opportunity for us to say absolutely not, the intention of, of our language is what's important and not finding a loophole. And I just wanna, that story really reminds me of how much energy we spend operating out of fear, which I think is unfortunate, it's not, it, it, it prevents us from doing more important work and bears mentioning. That being said, I, I also wanna point out that here we are at this incredibly important moment where we're figuring all these things out and SMPDC is not here. And, and Irish, I know that whenever this comes up, you're, you're very quick to point out and, and gracious about how much energy and time you're putting into helping out on this whole other side that is not part of the job description of, of, of the, of a code enforcement officer, and, and I think it is not serving you well, it is not fair to you, it's not fair to our town and we need to get out in front of this. It's not right that we do not have more energy coming from the planning side, there's a balance to everything and in our government, this is designed in a very specific way just for the exact same reason, as I said to you the other day, Tom, that, that the police officers not write the laws, they enforce them. It's not reasonable that, that all of the time that we're, we're being educated about tanks for, 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 for gasoline and, and it's, it's above, not just above and beyond, it's actually, it seems to me that, that there has to be a better way of doing it and I would love to find a way to get more, I don't know how we get more out of SMPDC, I asked James last week, how much they're, they're paid, it's, you know, obviously, there isn't enough money to make this as functional as it needs to be right now, but it does need to be addressed because it's not fair to you, your job, th- these conversations we're having about, about screening of, of, of trash and, and marijuana facilities that are run amok and that's the job. And, and man, we need you so much for that, but we also need somebody to be doing this planning and it shouldn't be James, it should be somebody who does planning for this town and, and, and you guys are here twice a month for a few hours, it's not, it's not reasonable to expect that the planning board can take all of this on and, and it's something that I would love to see us finesse in the next stretch. Finally, and, and to, to a point that Paul, you made earlier about the traffic study, I was on the, the call where that traffic study was presented, it was a three-hour almost Zoom call and it was horrifying, horrifying, in that when you are on a call with those bureaucrats, and I'm sure they're all very nice people and I'm sure they all have children and families and the reductive way that those deaths are discussed, I'm gonna choke up, it is wrong, it is wrong. And I said that on the call and I will say to all of us, it may be that the state has regulations about gas, it may be that the state has regulations about state roads, but it is still our job to show up and hold their feet to the fire and tell them we don't agree and that we want to make them change it. And it can't just be, oh, well, we'll add more driveways and more businesses and they're gonna change the speed limit, people have died, people have died recently, our friends' children have died.
Right.
I have three kids and I live off of that road, it is terrifying to pull out onto Route Four in the morning, taking them to camp, terrifying. And I don't personally believe that anything that came out of that traffic study is going to make it better, and it may be that people aren't driving fifty-five and they're driving fifty-three, but it doesn't mean people aren't dying, and when the bureaucrats who are looking at that say, it's only been, that's the language they use, it's only been this many deaths and according to our statistics, like when you talk to people in insurance and they're looking at a chart, but they're not thinking about human lives, it's only been this many deaths and according to our charts, there's no reason to change that speed limit. But there is, there is a reason and it's our job to show up and, and to figure out what we need to do at a state level to change that. So those are my three points, thank you for allowing me to insert that in the middle of the workshop, I just didn't wanna sit here thinking about that the whole time.
Jerry, just two, while you're up there, I just wanna, I know you had a lot of input, a lot of deep diving and then looking at things behind, I just wanna say thank you for your time too, because that's something that, you know, you're very passionate about and I, I know you put a lot of time into that, I don't think you get all the praise that should be there too, so thank you for what you did.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know, Tom's stealing the mic.
All right. So now I'll close the, now I'll close the workshop and then we'll move towards the old business.
We can talk about the same.
Oh, sorry, 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 reopen that, reopen the workshop and we'll talk about the design standards, sorry about that.
So just to be clear, James, just to paraphrase what you said earlier, these are guidelines that the planning board adopted in two thousand eighteen for the town and now you want to introduce them essentially as no longer guidelines, but standards that are part of the land use ordinance.
They, yep, they'd be standards that apply to land use ordinance performance standards as a, and they still, they still work as a supplement to the existing performance standards.
And, and as standards, the planning board will still have the ability to grant variance and conditions to modify things that might be restrictive to any one group or person.
The language is, um, as deemed practicable by the planning board, so that gives you some levity to, that way it's like if you find that something is not applicable, then that's up to the board to.
I think, to what you're saying, it goes back to when we looked at the plans for the Edge, they had to present us with what it would look like in color, basically what they were gonna do, they said they may wanna change it and they'll come back to the planning board if they wanna make some changes once they get to that point. So this would just give us, I guess, you're saying this would give us some guidelines when looking at those type of plans, right? That's the way I'm taking it.
Right, yeah, you'd have elevations and the applicants would have a better idea ahead of time what, what they're looking for.
Right.
It's less of a shot in the dark for, the first cut for an engineer architect firm. Engineers will have to, likely will have to hire an architect to help supplement this process, but to get it right, it's, it seems like the right move to make at this time for the town.
I guess, looking at this as the standards then, if there's something on what they present that's not addressed in here, it would be something that we would have to vote on, condition, or move further to look at it in a different way. So there's nothing in here hard and fast that says it shall be this way, but this gives us the recommendations, you don't want it this way, but we would like it this way for them to present to us, right?
That's, yeah.
And I think that was what the author of this was trying.
It also keeps the flexibility of adding it towards to see fit, you know.
And I mean, I've, I've seen examples of what we're looking at, you know, like, like you specifically mentioned the Freeport McDonald's, which doesn't look like any McDonald's in the area. It's very well, very well contemporary with the surrounding, you know, it's one of those, it's a good example of what our aim is, is not to have these, you know, not like we're driving through a highway in Texas where it's a hundred buildings with signs all across, yeah, exactly. That it's more, that it continues to keep the small-town charm that we're trying to maintain.
Exactly, exactly.
So that we don't become that. Yeah, I haven't, I've, I've skimmed through a lot of it, I haven't read every word, but I haven't found anything that is unacceptable or.
Right, the only, the only question I would have, since these are kinda like guidelines, should that, instead of standards, should they say guidelines?
Did it not address their thing?
You know, design guidelines, the standards, you mean this is hard and fast, guidelines, this is what they should strive and what we're looking for.
Well, I suspect, and correct me if I'm wrong, James, but I think that it's probably called, I mean, we could put guidelines and standards perhaps, but like a few things in here are standards, like the height, at no point should any building be taller than what is permissible in the zone, that's not a guideline, that's a hard and fast rule, we're not.
Yeah, it's true.
One story is fifteen feet here.
Well, no, 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 in, in one of the articles, it says a three-story building is like forty, no more than forty-five feet.
Yeah.
So it would make sense to put in here, no one-story building higher than fifteen feet. I mean, let's make that a, I, I put that in section one, height, one story, no more than fifteen feet in height, that needs to be put in there. That needs to be put in there.
That's where I ran to and Rick asked, and I was like, wait, this is.
That's one of the things I'm going to check with our legal about, because we're trying to, and we're trying to thread the needle between it being standards and it being a guideline. You want it to have teeth, so when the rubber meets the road, you say, no, we want you to have gable roofs, and you have to back up to the standards.
Okay. Because it's.
Because we've done that in the past on something I was involved in, we limited it, and we gave them a specific height.
But you guys as a planning board can do that, you know, and that's because that's where a lot of that even fits back to, you know, means specifications of neighbors, the area, you have that power, and I think you guys do a good job really overall, especially I sit there, I know your meetings are long, so I listen and I watch, and sometimes it's two days.
It's kind of covered there where you said proposed buildings to existing buildings, so.
What was that, Don?
It's, I mean, it's kind of covered there, it says the height of the proposed buildings or additions to existing buildings should be appropriate with neighboring buildings. That kind of covers it.
Yeah. And then you've got, and then you've got the permissible in the zone, which I obviously would not permit anything taller than what was allowed anyways.
No skyscrapers.
I think that goes back to something that Jeremy said, is don't be afraid to use your conditional power, like when you have somebody in front of you, you know, this is what we want, you know, just because it doesn't say it right in there doesn't mean you can't put that condition on.
The original height standards that we have was actually based on the old ladder truck that the fire department had.
Oh, that makes a lot of sense.
Fun fact. That's why second-story windows, the code is specific about how high your second-story window can be off of the actual ground level from so many feet out for the same very reason.
In fact, we had a building that we were reviewing about a year or two ago, and we made them actually put fill in around the building to lower the height so that it would be within reasonable standards, to meet fire code.
Yep. And your insurance won't pay otherwise.
Right, yeah. Oh, that.
You can't even get insurance otherwise. So smart, most of the world operates that way.
I think that's very complete. Thank you, Jeremy, for.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Yeah, no, I really like this.
Yeah, I didn't see any problem with this.
My only one comment on it. Thank you, James, too, because I just want to say, James actually came up with this in 2018.
Me, James.
And I remember the two-hour presentation that he had on the PowerPoint slides of all this with the update. I'd say thank you, Jeremy.
Well, James sat with me and did the hard work, I gave him the image of, but pile of stuff.
Oh, yeah, sorry, so my only comment, I don't have anything specific, is just some of the not acceptables possibly when it gets quick. If we're going to say, hey, we're going to adapt it as a standard, just do they all need to be that not acceptable in there, or are there a couple that you might want to remove, or does it just blanket under if it's not applicable, it's not applicable, you know, just, that was my only comment, but I really like it.
I think it's more limiting, like, the box stores from coming in.
Yeah, no, and.
Making that box.
And like I said, I had no strong opinion one way or the other, I like the way it's written.
We could have a box store, then just have to make it look nice with a rural store. Not that hard.
A Walmart with a kettle.
A Walmart with really nice siding and screening and no light pollution and appropriate parking.
A Lowe's that looks like an old ship captain's mansion.
We could have a McDonald's right down there.
The Falmouth McDonald's, right.
Two things, one, I don't see one of these in town, and two, the timer's almost up, so.
All right, so anything else on the design standards?
Anything else on the workshop in general?
On the workshop in general? Okay, I'll close that now officially, and on to old business.
We can leave, yeah.
Couldn't we?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Article VII for the updated costs.
I second that motion.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Don, you are the one that seconded that?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so additional request to the overlay district. I'll make a motion that we accept nine Goodwin Street, U4-126 into the village commercials, the village overlay district.
I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? All right. Next is the land use amendments.
We made a lot of amendments, those amendments.
I'll make a motion that we accept the land use ordinance amendments as amended.
You can go through each, please probably go through each one.
The changes to the convenience store, gas station, those will be made for the next meeting that we have, right? Is that what we came up with?
They'll be incorporated, so you recommend them as amended. So you should, basically, the board should vote on each one to recommend each.
Okay.
By each one, you mean each section?
So, like, can we make a motion on each one?
Yeah, number one, automotive convenience store changes as amended.
Will we get a copy of all the amended verbiage at some point?
It'll be up on the agenda, except for the select board.
Well, we want to make, we want to make sure that what we've discussed and kind of agreed upon as a total group here, that it does get into that ordinance.
Yes, it will be, it will be as amended, and so we'll be.
So we can tweak it.
We both have notes, and we also have to review the video to do the minutes, so.
And then the select board.
But then, yes, it's got to go up to the select board.
And make sure that it is amended to what we've already discussed. I think we're all getting close to the same page for these things, so.
So two sets of, two boards, sets of eyes will be over it, because, yes, it'll be on the website and the agenda. And you guys can come for their meeting, and.
Oh, I'll be there.
Yeah, they'll be, I mean, the changes will be out to you by Monday, if not tomorrow.
Great. So if we see something wrong, we can just get back.
Yeah. But then it'll still be a public period.
You're going to kill my.
Oh, you're going to do it?
So we can vote on this as amended.
So based on that, I motion that we accept the automotive convenience store additions to the LUO as amended and discussed here tonight.
I will second that.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? So next is the mixed use.
Yep.
Yes, the underlying stuff. Oh, no, we haven't changed, we didn't amend anything.
I think that was.
No, there was no changes to that one.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the mixed use as written.
I'll second. Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
You can do the three, the EDU changes, so that's the table, F, and then the square-footed size.
So that's 6.2, 6.3.1, F4, 8.13.
Yep.
Which is amended.
Which is amended.
Wait, what was amended?
I'm like, wait, I just. All right, quit messing with me.
I'll make a motion that we accept the current amendments to 6.2, 6.3.1, F4, 8.13, and number one off of that.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Period. Okay. Sorry.
You probably just vote on the coop, like, the cooperative caregiver one and then do the cap.
Number five, marijuana amendments.
I'll make a motion that we approve the number five marijuana cooperative amendment.
I will second that.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
It's supposed to be opposed, too.
Yeah, sorry. I'm just not used to having opposed people. No, I'm just saying it's very infrequent. The only thing that we've had opposed people is when it comes to cannabis, and that's, all right, so moving along.
Last one's the cap.
The cap. I'll make a motion that we remove the cannabis cap.
No, solar farm cap.
Nope, because we're doing it two separate.
Oh, okay.
I want to repeat.
So a motion is made.
On which, the cannabis cap?
The cannabis cap.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay, all opposed? Okay, next up is the solar farms. So I'll make a motion to accept the solar farm standards as amended.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, further discussion?
Yeah, as amended, was this removing F, correct?
Yes.
Yes. What was it?
Removing F.
Yeah. So all in favor? And then the lighting, or that's part of the solar farm?
No, that's.
Seven point four.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve 7.4 lighting as written.
I'll second that motion.
Jerry beat you.
Further discussion?
I have a, I have a point to ask about that, and it simply comes down to kind of like definitions of words. Under number two, letter F, it says lighting controlled by motion-activated sensors and which limit the duration of illumination to less than five minutes after activation. And it goes on to number, to letter G. I just, and maybe I'm off-base here, but I just wonder if that's very broad in how it says basically lighting controlled by motion-activated sensors. Does it define, either somewhere else where I'm not seeing it, what that lighting is that's controlled by a motion-activated sensor? In other words, could they have a strobe light that comes on with a motionary sensor?
No, it has to conform to the downward-facing dark sky compliant lights.
And the 1600 lumens.
And the 1600 lumens, right.
Okay, so it falls under the previous.
All the other lights.
Yeah. So when this comes up, we discuss this, right?
I think all this means is it's not on all the time and this motion sets it on, you don't want it.
And it's limited to five minutes.
Yes.
Limited to five minutes, yeah, so it goes away.
It's not a, not a permanent source of lighting.
Right.
Okay. So that was the discussion, all in favor? Okay. Where's that? I'll open, oh, yeah, the design standards are, I'll make a motion that we approve the updated design standards, design guidelines and standards as, as written, because we didn't amend anything, right?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Next is the second public comment.
All eyes on you, my friend.
I guess I can bring it up, too.
I'll speak on other business.
Yep, next is additional information, if anyone else has anything.
I really think this was a great meeting. I thought we got a lot accomplished. It's going to save us a ton of time in our upcoming meeting.
You're welcome.
Yes, I wish, I just wish that we had done it sooner, so it didn't feel so pressing. I know that there was, you know, the holiday came in there and it kind of limited time, and so for next year, let's all put this in our planner as something that we can do. I don't think we'll be making as many changes next year, but something that we can try to do next year is have this meeting again and go through these things, because when we do get these, you know, land use ordinance changes, we do take a long time going through them like we did tonight. Somebody has to stand up there, and we have to grill their questions, and, you know, this is much simpler.
Should do it in June.
Yeah, so I think that is.
It's a lot easier said than done.
Well, that is true.
The timing, the timing of everything, and like we've all said, two meetings a month is.
We're going to blink it.
The challenge with June is you've got to remember, June is the vote.
Right.
How would we ever remember that?
I don't know.
I'm going to go talk on everybody's story.
I do want to thank Jerry and my other cohort, Paul, for all the extra work and all the extra work you've done, Irish, you, James, and our outside sources. I'll tell you, fantastic job to everybody.
Absolutely.
My pleasure. For informational items, I do want to mention that I am looking to do a, we won't do it immediately, particularly where we got a couple of new board members on planning board and on select board, although I don't know if we have one for select board, but MMA's planning board and BOA thing, I waited for the newer updated, I can buy it through my training budget, have my Board of Appeals and my planning board sit down, select board would be welcome as well, just to watch this, to just go over the procedures, the laws and any changes. So I will see about getting that on the schedule, but not for quite a few weeks, because I think we're all about meeting doubt this week, so.
This meeting was much more calm, all right. I did watch the other one online, and that was pretty, that was dysfunctional. It was awful.
Well, I apologize, because I'll be honest, I feel like I should apologize to the board and everybody that was even watching last week. I was freshly diagnosed with Lyme and very short-tempered and very impatient and very foggy-headed.
I thought you were perfectly patient. I thought she was rich now.
I felt like I was horrible to everybody. I've already apologized to Jeremy, so I formally apologize to the board and to Patty, who I accidentally referred to as the administrative assistant.
It's how it goes, right? I mean, the document wasn't ready, and you got 17 things on the agenda, so.
But I wasn't, I wasn't myself.
We skipped that July 4th week, and then you get a, you get a 20-page document, you go, you got to vote on this tonight.
Right.
That's the thing, Lee J said, when we had that meeting, we're going to discuss this. Well, there was never a discussion, and we were told we have to vote, and we all, it all took us by surprise, like, we wanted to discuss this.
I just feel like.
Well, we were going to discuss it, and then we all were in consensus that since Irish was gone on one of those meetings, that we're going to hold off on it. Well, in doing, no, no, no.
Always Irish's fault. Irish was sick last time, that one meeting, and then Irish has Lyme.
We should have followed it through that day, though.
You took one day off, and it almost ruined the November vote, can you believe it?
As you know, I am, I'm destroying this town single-handedly, so, but I do apologize.
Actually, it was Mike's fault because he wasn't here.
No, I totally understand what happened, you know, it's just unfortunate that it happened, so.
But now, learned.
Next year, we'll try to do better.
Can I go home now?
All right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, thank you.